I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bloomington City or the city of Bloomington Township. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We will just need to do the roll really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I have to adjust one thing really quick. Okay. And we have Trustee Kearns.
Present.
Trustee Bolin.
Here.
Trustee Dannenberger. And Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
All right, and in terms of-
Now, I can ask about-
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
We received no public comment registrations or emails.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, is there anyone that would like to pull something? I see nobody. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as it is.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Crumpler, second by Trustee Ward. There are no names to announce. And the next item is regular agenda. A, report on change order number six for the township. Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments, other than we're staying under the $75,000 in change orders, so it's just for information only.
Okay. And the next item is consideration and action on the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 tax levy. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Hendricks, second by Trustee Crumpler. Any comments? Okay. There are no names, motion passes. The next item is reports by elected official.
I think I'm first. I just wanted to note again that our tax levy has not increased since 2018. So just making you aware, we're staying fiscally responsible with our funds and still getting the job done. Um. I need to have one more comment, but oh, um. At this point, our anticipated completion of the renovation will be at the end of January. And we're hoping for the end of December, but you know how things go, so it's moving along really nicely. The J C J Spencer is a really good company to work, so. Any questions for me?
Okay. And the next item is presentation and discussion of the Township Assessor's Report.
Good evening. The report I submitted was a comparison report of the tax rates for other municipalities in McLean County, along and showing the city's tax rate and how the aggregate rate has fallen, are tracked year over year. The formula for getting to the tax rate is the taxable E A V is divided by the levy, and that gives us a rate. So that rate, if the taxing bodies never make an increase in their request for spending, that rate should typically fall down. But the taxing bodies, if they increase the amount they need to spend, then that rate would be adjusted towards that. So as we're getting calls about the assessments going up in our city, the, we get the question over and over and over, my taxes are going up, my taxes are going up. It's not that your taxes are going up, it's that your assessment and your value of property is going up. And then the rate will be set based on what taxing bodies such as the township and the city request would adjust that rate. Any questions?
Any questions? I have a kind of a question. Have you been getting feedback for challenges on the assessments?
We have had several complaints filed already, and we're still working through that process. Next month, I'll be able to present how many complaints we have today is the deadline for the complaints to be turned into the county. And so once the mail, probably in the next few days, we'll have a total count of what those will be. Not the amounts, but the number of complaints, and then we'll see where the board adjusts the values.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Can I make one more comment? Sorry, I just want to make one more comment as a reminder.
I'm sorry.
Our December meeting is very early, it's December 9th. And I'm sorry, 11th, 9th is the 2024 I was looking at, it's the 11th.
Okay, because of Christmas, you're gonna have it, okay, this number 11.
Yeah, same day as the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. So now we have a motion.
Yep, now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
From Trustee Hendricks.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Crumpler. Everybody who wants to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Those that want to continue, say no. We're adjourned, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns.
Present.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Dannenberger.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milli Onebye.
Okay, here, and it's my understanding that Councilmember Montney is joining virtually, right?
She had planned to, but we still don't have her online, so.
Online, okay.
I can let you know at which point she jumps online.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So we're gonna move on to recognition and appointments, Madam Clerk.
We'd like to recognize Jan Murphy to the Police Pension Board.
Okay, thank you, and I know she, I don't see her here, but thank you, Jen, wherever you are.
And also, Councilmember Montney has joined us online.
Okay, sounds good, and is there a motion to have Councilmember Montney join us online?
I'll make a motion to allow Councilmember Montney to attend virtually.
Second.
And I'll note that Councilmember Montney is out for business-related reasons, right? Okay. Would you call the roll then?
Councilmember Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks. Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Montney, are you there? Going once, twice?
She's muted. She's muted, yeah.
Councilmember Montney, can you unmute so we can hear your voice? hear your voice?
He said that she is unable to uh unmute.
Unmute, okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll just uh keep going until, so please let us know when you're able to unmute or at least call that to our attention so we can uh allow you to participate. Um, is next uh is a public comment. Do we have public comment, Madame Claire?
We do. Um, we received no emailed public comment, and we have four people um registered to speak in person. After uh you read your statement, we'll start with Gary Lambert and then Scott Steimling to follow.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views. Speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time is seized.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert. A number of quick topics here. Grouped under a heading of feelings of entitlement and extortion. First item. Last meeting, someone used the phrase, words matter. They certainly do. We had a councilwoman that stated that a five percent levy increase was in fact not an increase at all. How ridiculous. Garbage fees. Those were originally paid out of the general fund a number of years ago. Then it went to eight dollars. Then to sixteen. Then we had a three percent annual increase. And now it's CPI WST. Just for reference, over the last twenty-five years, CPI has doubled. While the WST has tripled. So we're gonna get quite a raise here. Termination dates. Back when we had a twenty-five percent, twenty, one-fourth of one percent tax for BCPA and downtown improvements. And that had a ten-year termination date. When that time came, it brought before the council. The majority of the council members started laughing. And it was overwhelmingly passed. I think Mboko was the only one who was present at that time. When the elimination of a structural deficit was discussed a while back, Councilman Crable used as an excuse the lack of termination language. Will there be termination language included in the generational fee increases? Free bus rides offered by the library to cardholders. Three hundred and seventy-nine new cards issued in September saying they were with some saying they were only getting the cards for free rides. What's next to increase their card count? Free ice cream cones? And I see the town of Normal this spring eliminated their vehicle use tax. I see this council, they're out to get every penny they can. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Scott Steimling, and then to follow, Serena Fish.
Scott Steimling, Ward five. Um, Mike, I've got a grave concern. I'm referring to the leaves that are uh raked in the street. They were to be raked to the parkway. We, the uh city did not get around and pick them up. And we had a big snow. And if they are mulched, that's one thing, but when ninety percent of them or more is not mulched, then we have a big wind to redistribute some. And then it's up to the property owner to get those things picked up again. And if the city would get out and pick the leaves up, that's one thing, but they don't. Uh, you know, I, there's a storm drain out in front of my house that it's been probably at least fifteen years since that thing needs to be raised. And cost of goods and services were a lot lower than than they are now. I understand the city is uh looking at an increase in the garbage fee. Since when? When is, when's this gonna stop? All the fees and everything? The garbage at one point, if you recall correctly, was included in the property taxes. And then normal charge five, we'll charge, Bloomington charged five, then it went to seven, then it went to fourteen, then it went to sixteen, eighteen, and twenty. Then it went to twenty, twenty-three. What's next? Uh, I guess the, the thing that needs to stop is all these fees, and you're gonna get it so expensive, nobody can afford to move to Bloomington. And basically, all we've got is the ADA, the sidewalks, the ADA sidewalks are supposed to be in effect in nineteen ninety. I'm still waiting. The sidewalks are terrible. They're up and down. Uh, there was a neighbor that his father was using a walker. And he lives three doors from me. And the sidewalks were so bad, they tried the streets, and streets were worse, and they went back to his son's house. That speaks real well for the city of Bloomington, doesn't it? And, you know, to be quite honest, I'm, the, the, the roads are absolutely pathetic. The storm drains need to be raised. Everything is going to pot in this town. But yet, I forgot. And what's wrong with using the ARPA money for some of this uh, these fringes that you wanna raise taxes on? That people just about had it. And I think that this city council better wake up and realize, hey, this is not a free ride. Also, what's wrong with the uh city council people not getting paid? They serve at will. You know, if, if that's what's gonna keep their head above water, I don't think much of it. That's another thing that could be uh eliminated. But the city really doesn't care. They'll just raise taxes. Tim Gleason's salary. Uh, I wonder how much that increase went to his salary and benefits. But, you know, I forgot, you know, Tim Gleason's a great guy. And as my father said, I wish I could buy him for what he is worth and sell him for what he thinks he is worth. Thank you.
Next up, we have Serena Fish, and then to follow, Jackie Byer will finish.
Good evening. My name is Serena Fish. I'm usually very positive or try to come up with something positive. Uh, tonight, I think Gary and Jackie are presenting you, between the two of them, all the facts on there is room, and I think you need to consider decreasing some more of this property tax. What I am here to speak about is two things. All this water reclamation and the basin and the lake and the, at the end of that is a tent city. It's tent city. What's gonna happen? That tent city across the street is a playground. The building that it's next to, there's a playground. Block and a half away is a, a school, a grade school. Two blocks up is a library. I keep going by there. The people that are out there at that tent city have money to smoke. You can smell the weed. They're drinking all the time. But they can't find a place to live. But they're allowed to be somewhere where other places, we don't let them be there. And where they are right now is very, very uh unsafe for the neighborhood. The other thing and the last thing. I am part of um downtown Bloomington. Even though we're considered on the fringe, because we're in the warehouse district. So I'm speaking for Black Friday and Shop Small Saturday. So at eleven twenty-six AM on Saturday morning, a young lady shows up from the city with a poster and some tickets and some bags at eleven twenty-six on a Saturday morning. Where was she a week ago? Where was the city a week ago? I know there are other people downtown that are as upset as I am. Luckily, we've learned not to distrust that department to include us. This time, we found out it wasn't just us. It was everybody. We were ignored to set it up. And it's really not a good thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Last up is Jackie Byer.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Jackie Byer. If it's not one thing, it's another. Um, from what I understand, I'm looking at this uh financial summary that's gonna be presented today. Um, it looks like our year-to-date budget variance on major tax revenues looks like it's two-point-seven million dollars over what was expected to be collected. Maybe I'm wrong, but, and this says year-to-date months collected. You know, home rule sales tax, three months, state sales tax, three months, income tax, only four months into the fiscal year of co- of collected. Yet, you still want to increase the levy one-point-one million dollars. Um, that just seems like a real slap in the face. Uh, where things stand now with all the taxing bodies, um, my husband and I will be paying over seven hundred dollars more in property taxes with our next property tax bill. Now it's the water, sewer, and trash rates. In case you haven't looked up, looked it up, the CPI for W, for waste, sewer, trash, otherwise known as CPI WWST, has increased five-point-three percent for the period of October twenty-twenty-two and up to October twenty-twenty-three. And the average annual CPI WST from Statistica increased over the past year. The average increase has been four-point-two percent at a pretty steady rate. I looked at our um, at our bill to recalculate it for the next several years to see the impact of the increases that are being proposed. First, I noticed the bill does not have any usage charges shown on the bill, just the flat rate, nor does it show the tax rate. Is that something that could be added to the bill? I think it would be helpful. I had to go to the City of Bloomington website to get the usage rates. I also noticed that the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District rates had increased fifty, fifteen percent on May first of this year after a seven percent increase from the prior year. Assuming a three, three-hundred-and-fifty cubic feet water usage, a four-point-two annual increase is in CPI WST, starting with the May first two thousand twenty-four rates. I will be paying almost four-hundred-and-fifty dollars more through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven than the twelve-month period we are in now. Even though the tax rate is going down, I will be paying over forty percent more in utility taxes in twenty-twenty-six than what I am paying in twenty-twenty-three. Currently, the utility tax revenue is restricted to public safety pensions, so where will it be going after this increase? No one is getting wage increases anywhere near these increases. At what point will the government bankrupt everybody and take all of our money? Thank you for listening.
Do we have any other?
There's no further public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Um, wanted to try one more time to see if Councilmember Montney could hear us, or?
I, I have heard from IT that she is able to use her uh service now.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So motion by Councilmember Hendricks, and second by Councilmember Bolin. Um, and we have to make sure Councilmember Montney can say.
Yep. Councilmember Montney, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda passes. There are no needs to announce. And now we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda, which is a um, let's see, presentation of the FY twenty-twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report um, delivered by the audit firm of Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, as requested by the finance department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason and for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, and to the community. Before I turn the floor over to Finance Director Scott Rathman and uh Mike Malat with Baker Tilly. You know, even though we walk through this uh rather quickly uh every single year in a presentation, this is an extremely important document for any municipality. And it's one that the City of Bloomington, the residents, I know this council appreciate the hard work that Scott does. I know Assistant Finance Director Patty Lynn Silva uh runs uh, runs point on this for the city, and uh we continue to, and you're gonna hear it here in a couple of minutes. But we continue to uh do a, a very good job, uh, an excellent job for the uh community. So Scott, thanks.
Uh, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. Uh, we, the fi- uh, audit was finalized on October twenty-fifth. It was literally a six-month process to complete that audit. Um, there's delays in uh some of the financial recognition, some of our sales tax revenues come in for a couple of months after, into the fiscal year. But it, it really is a quite comprehensive effort related to coordination among other separate entities like the Public Safety Pension Funds. They have their own separate audits. It's really an all-hands-on-deck for the finance department, many of their departments around the city, like human resources. So a, a great thanks to the finance team. Again, Patty Lynn Silva runs point, HR department heavily involved. Uh, so tonight, Michael Malat's gonna give you a really kind of an overview of what the audit means. It'd be, uh, it'd take a lot of time to actually go through the audit, a hundred and seventy-two pages. Um, but what it means, uh, the, the financial stability of, of the city, hopefully it demonstrates um the um correctness of our financial statements. So Michael's from the, the firm of Baker and Tilly, which uh Tim mentioned. Uh, this firm, Baker Tilly, um, is one of the, the tenth-largest accounting firms in the US, uh, over ninety years of public service uh sector experience, uh, serving nearly four thousand state and local government entities, including over a hundred Illinois governments. And they're in the top four nationally in the number of single audits performed. Uh, for, for us personally here at the city, um, they're great partners in, in more than just the audit. Uh, great uh service from this firm, and it's been a pleasure to work with them. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Michael Malat, partner with Baker Tilly.
Thanks, Scott, and thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Uh, before I get started, just really quick, quick thanks, kind of reiterating what Tim said on to Scott and Patty Lynn and their team, and really all the departments that we pester for a few months every year on top of their day job. Uh, we're not able to meet the timelines that are required by the city um to meet, to issue the annual comprehensive financial report without your teams really pulling a lot of weight to provide us information and answer all the questions and kind of deal with us on a daily basis for a while while trying to manage everything else. So I do wanna thank them uh for their efforts in the really the responsive nature, the professional nature they continue to always uh display. So you should be proud of the finance team that you guys have in place. Um, so tonight, as Scott said, I'm not gonna go into really any numbers. Obviously, if you have questions, stop me, ask. I'm, I'm always available to go into those. But really gotta focus on what it all means, right? Um, and what we actually do. Um, so a number of different reports that we issue is part of the audit process. The first one is the big one, the annual comprehensive financial report. That's the about two hundred-page document that's issued. Uh, that report is encompasses the entire scope of the city's operations, including the pension funds that there is some level fiduciary responsibility for on with the city. As well as the Bloomington Library Foundation as well, that serves as a component, kind of a related entity of the city. We audit a number of these pieces, we work together throughout all of that. All the numbers and the information in there, that's your information, it's your results, your financial picture for the year. There's really only three pages in there, four pages that come from us, and that's the independent auditor's report. What that report says in the most somewhat difficult language possible that they created for us to put in there is that we're able to provide you what's called an unmodified opinion. What that is, is the highest level assurance based on the work we formed, we can provide, we can provide for you. What that means is that in addition to going through your numbers and your processes, I'm not saying every dollar, we don't look at every dollar, but we do say within any reasonable capacity. No reasonable assurance that the information in there is accurate and reflects the city's financial health accurately can be used by both the citizens, yourselves, bondholders, whoever is a user of your financial limits, and they can trust that information is accurate. And presents a a clear picture of where the city is financially as of April thirtieth twenty twenty three. Those opinions aren't always unmodified, we make lots of changes, we find lots of issues at a lot of our clients. So to get an unmodified opinion requires a lot of work on your team's part and a lot of understanding of what is required to present the varying activities and operations of the city throughout the year. So it's not a percent, we beat the heck out of them, and to get a clean opinion is um, it's an effort on the city's part to ensure they're providing that information accurately and cleanly. Um, if you're going to read anything in that report, I always recommend reading the management discussion analysis in the transmittal letter at the beginning of the report. They're kind of a higher level picture, they work in tandem. The management discussion and analysis is really number focused, it shows you how things have, you know, compared to the prior year. It's some high-level activity in some of the funds, um, whereas the transmittal letter is more non-financial. What's happening from an economic development standpoint, what's on the horizon for the city. Um, they really work as um kind of sister doc documents within the report itself, they give you a kind of a complete picture of the city. So if you're going to read anything, those are the two sections to read. As you move through the report, it gets more detailed, more into the minutia, really exciting stuff sometimes um in there. Uh, the only thing that's changed from prior years from a reporting standpoint, again, just a minor thing I want to make sure you're aware of, there was a new standard with how lease financing is presented. Um, long story short, it means that there are some new items on your report that weren't required to be presented kind of in a long-term focus. So anything you're renting out, long-term contracts you've entered into, which the city does have some where they're leasing out, um, the the dock rentals and a few other things. Um, weren't required to be reported other than when money comes in. Now they're put on the books for the long-term life of those agreements. Same thing when you are leasing items, there are a couple of items that really weren't reported that way before, now they're on there. So just some things to see that are different on that if you're reading through the financial statements, you will notice that is a little different from before. Otherwise, the report, and as you can see the numbers, um, I know it's a little bit old too, just given the timing of how long it takes to get the reports issued. Um, but it paints a strong picture for the city for the year. In addition to the big report, there are a bunch of other things we issue associated with that. There is a separate report that issued for the foreign fire insurance board, uh, requires us to kind of really take a deeper dive on that fund and what happens in in with that activity than we otherwise would be required to if it was just part of the city's audit. Looking at it on its own, uh, that is something we work with that with the with the fire department on to make sure that we're getting their information and auditing that and really kind of looking at with a fine-tooth comb. We can issue an unmodified opinion on that fund as well. Uh, we also do what's called a single audit, which is uh related to your spending of federal dollars. It's a really a deep dive into not just what was spent, but your compliance with federal requirements. And also the processes you have in place to ensure you remain compliant in the future. So we don't just look at numbers and what was spent, we look at a whole bunch of different attributes and elements of how your programs are run. This year, we particularly looked at the ARPA spending to ensure that was spent in accordance with all of uh the US Treasury's requirements around how that money is to be spent. We identified no findings this year, uh, and were able to give you a clean opinion both on compliance and also your processes related to ensuring you remain compliant with that. Um, there was a finding last year that was remediated during the year too. We have to go back and always look at that, even if not looking at that specific program, we have to go and ensure that you've. It you'll put into place uh updated processes to ensure that doesn't happen again, and they were addressed and there were no issues there as well. So it's a, it's a great thing. Additionally, we have to look at your TIF spending and your TIF test during the year. We go look at a number of different statutory compliance requirements there. We issue a clean opinion on that as well this year, there are no issues with uh your TIF compliance with regard to spending and some other items associated with that. There are some other statutory reports that are also required to be compiled and issued. There is a report that goes to the controller's office that is submitted through their online portal, which is essentially a regurgitation of the financial statements in their preferred way. Um, that is required to be done concurrently with the financial statements, as well as what's called uh the consolidated year-end financial report. Which is required by the governmental accountability and transparency unit, which is just another way of presenting the same financial information, but is required and is used by most of the state agencies to ensure that the the information you're presenting and uploading, including your audit and both in your in your single audit as well, is consistent with the information they're expecting to see as part of their monitoring operations at a state level. So a bunch of other things there. All that stuff relates to what you do and us giving opinion on what you do. There's an additional deliverable that's issued with that, that is the audit results and insights letter. That is a letter from us to use the governing body. That covers a number of different required communications, the audit standards mandate we do. Some of them are simply related to telling you what our responsibilities are, a little overview of the audit process and really kind of some results of what happened. Whether there are any internal control issues, if we look through your processes to make sure there are any risks or weaknesses in your control processes. Also related a whole bunch of things like disagreements with management, um, any significant difficulties during the audit. Long story short, it is a very boring letter because boring is good. Boring means there are no major issues or concerns or things that arose during the course of the audit that we are required to communicate to you directly as the governing body. So it is something we have, we are required to provide to you every year. It is a lot of, because there are a lot of different things and a lot of kind of very accounting language. Um, but long story short, if it's not juicy, it's a good thing and it's it's it'll put you to sleep. So um, it is a report and letter, though, and it is is a communication that the audit went smoothly and well, and there are no different findings outside of anything we would have identified through our other opinions as well. So it kind of closes the loop on anything else that may have happened during the audit itself. There's also a link to our website that's specifically designed with content for governing bodies. Some of the information is relevant, some of it is not, but it's in there in the electronic version, if you want to take a peek, and the information is updated on a regular basis. So I always want to make sure um you're aware of that. And lastly, uh, as the governing body, and we work for you. We work with Scott and Paylin and the other departments on for the audit on a day-to-day, but in the end, you engage us to complete the audit in the city. So if there's anything that ever that you want to know about, ask about, talk about, we're always available to you, not just here tonight, but at any time during the course of the year. So with that, thank you, and if you have any questions.
Oh, thank you, Mike, for that non-juicy audit.
Always a good thing.
And I'm going to turn it over to council members if they have questions. Your light is up. Uh, council member Danover, no? Okay. Okay, alright. Uh, and council member Motley, any questions?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, you're off to, thank you so much. Okay, next item um on the agenda is a presentation of water capital project needs and consideration action on an ordinance amending the city code regarding the water rate structure. Lowering the water utility tax and modifying the annual increases in refuse water. Uh, and stormwater fees from three percent to CPI WSD. As requested by the water department. And I'm going to turn it over to deputy city manager Jeff Jurgens and Ed Andrews, water director.
Thank you very much, mayor and council. Uh, just a couple of quick things before I turn this over to our water director, Ed Andrews. Uh, first, I presented before you tonight an ordinance that contains a couple of amendments. Uh, so we'd asked that the ordinance be approved as amendment amended. This includes inadvertently some of the information, some of the charts regarding the cubic feet, the uh volumetric rates were inadvertently left out, so that's included back in. And then there was just a couple of typos with references back to the to the different numbers. So uh, there is a corrected ordinance that is in front of you tonight. Um, uh, our director, Ed Andrews, is going to go over what we've been trying to talk, start talking about for a while now. Three hundred and fifty to four hundred million dollars in water capital projects that the wa- that the city of Bloomington has to complete. The other part of that is the rate structure, how we're going to pay for it, how we're going to fund these improvements. The eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is obviously the water rate increases that are needed. Uh, staff felt that trying to do this as one giant increase at the beginning was not going to be something that could be sustained uh by the users. So what staff is proposing is for the increases to be spread out over three years, starting on uh May one of twenty twenty four. Um, and then uh increasing thirty-three percent for the next three years, then going to a CPI, which is a more reasonable number. But will help us keep up with uh with projects as we go. Um, the other thing I would say is that we're asking for this increase to go into effect. Uh, it'd be approved now so that we can start the planning stages, uh, finish getting the funding in line and and the financing. And so we appreciate uh your attention tonight to this important presentation, and I would turn it over to director Andrews.
Uh, hate for this to be my first introduction to council beyond my initial introduction a couple of months ago, but uh I have wrapped up uh pretty extensively with an undertaking of of uh our capital program and what impacts that would have to our rate structure. Next slide. Uh, brief background, uh, most of you probably already know the city was founded in eighteen twenty-two. But to get more specifically on the water side, we first established uh the system in eighteen seventy-five with uh some wells on Division Street where the water department resides to this day. And then in nineteen twenty-nine, we outpaced those wells and established Lake Bloomington. That was a constructed project as well as the water plant nineteen twenty-nine. Next slide. Our system draws water from Lake Bloomington, also expanded into uh Lake Evergreen. Uh, we have an emergency intake off of the Mackinaw River. Uh, question came up with what do we do with that water? We blend that into Lake Evergreen and then through normal transport from Lake Evergreen to the plant, uh, bring that into the system. Uh, and also in some past uh down years, drought years, uh, we've come to recognize a need potentially for another blended water source uh with groundwater. So that's an ongoing study right now that we're carefully stepping through. Uh, to give you uh some appreciation on volumetrics. Uh, our average day at the plant is eleven million gallons a day, which uh deputy manager Jurgens wanted that in water bottles, so eighty-eight million water bottles. Uh, we peak out at seventeen million gallons a day, and then our plant itself is rated by the IEPA at twenty-four and a half million gallons a day. Just give you some more appreciation of the scope, uh, size of our system. We have almost four hundred and fifty miles of water main throughout the system, and we uh serve almost thirty-three thousand accounts. Next slide. So one good metric that I want to share uh is how much would this all cost if we were to rebuild it today? And believe it or not, there are times where a natural disaster may arise where you have to rebuild uh part of your infrastructure. And our total replacement value is eight hundred and fifty million, that includes the plant, all the water main and infrastructure. Uh, we would not include buying the property again to construct both lakes, but assuming we lost the dams, uh, that would be the reconstructed value. Next slide. And so the investment that we're talking about really comes from a system that was established in the late eighteen hundreds with uh, the major overhaul in the early nineteen twenties where we established the plant that we operate from today, uh, as well as uh Lake Bloomington. Uh, this investment really is needed, uh, that transmission main that ties the lake uh to to the community. Uh, some ten miles away, uh, that is something that we want to keep pace with, uh, state and federal mandates. And we want to keep uh in compliance with all those standards. And we want to maintain our capacity, obviously, for growth and serving the needs of the community. Next slide. So as our system ages out, we experience what's called apparent water loss. And what that translates to is for every three gallons that we pump from the plant, two gallons reaches the house and is actually metered that we collect a revenue. Uh, we've included a breakdown out of that thirty-three percent. Seventeen percent of that thirty-three or almost half of that is lost through aged system mains. So the distribution, just to get it from the plant to your doorstep, uh, is is half of the loss that we're experiencing. And the more our system ages out, the more we expect to see that increase. Uh, we've got a breakdown of some other components in there, uh, water meter inaccuracy, the longer those are in the system. You start seeing those increase in their inaccuracy as well, so that's something that's ongoing, but we'll look to try to get that down to more like one and a half to two percent from six percent. And take that distribution leakage down as we improve the uh main infrastructure. Next slide. As already mentioned, uh, the main capital really breaks down into four major categories out of that three hundred and fifty to four hundred million. System-wide distribution, uh, which is the rehab of our nineteen twenty-nine uh pipeline interconnect from the plant to to the city. Uh, is approximately a hundred million. Lead service replacement is another hundred million. Water main replacement, which is the age out of the system. This is really just the measure of the first ten years. This will be an ongoing project now and forevermore to keep up with main replacement on the age out. And then plan improvements to keep pace with uh uh the regulations and just general age out of the plant. We'll go into detail on these in the next slides. Next slide. Uh, system-wide distribution. Uh, a couple of items there. Uh, the start out is the replacement of the nineteen twenty-nine main, which connects the plant to Division Street under its current configuration. Uh, that system was augmented with another transmission main, a parallel main along Sugar Creek in nineteen fifty-four. Uh, both of those are experiencing age out and and breaks. Now, I've included a slide that shows uh that original nineteen twenty-nine main, uh, where we had some failure up by the plant. So it is definitely reached its uh end of useful life, and we'd expect a a piece of main from that era uh in the nineteen twenties to have a a hundred-year life, so not unexpected at all to be sitting here at ninety-five years out, needing to replace that. Uh, we would also look on system-wide to retire the ground storage tanks at Division Street. Uh, the the main tank is actually from nineteen oh six, and then a uh sister tank, so to speak, uh, went in in nineteen fifty-four with the parallel main. Uh, we'd replace those with two new ground storage tanks and two elevated tanks throughout the system. That would bring us uh into full compliance with the current storage requirements by IEPA. Next slide. And this gives an overview of some of uh where the locations are. Uh, we value engineered out uh the Sugar Creek Transmission Main and would look to establish uh a new pumping station at the northeast quadrant up by I fifty-five and Veterans. Uh, so we're calling that the I fifty-five Tank Farm. So that would include a pumping station capable of the full capacity of the plant at twenty-four million gallons, along with two four-million gallon ground storage tanks. Again, we'd retire uh the transmission main. Uh, we've talked to Ben Ward about the potential for some reuse there, so there's some interest, but we'll investigate that further uh as time marches on. Uh, again, we would uh replace that ground storage tank, uh, so we would have a new elevated storage tank at Division Street, retire both of those old tanks. And then uh at Prairie Vista, another two million gallon elevated storage tank, and that would uh augment the Hamilton Tank. Which is our only elevated tank currently in the system. Next slide. Lead service, uh, this is an update, uh, federal mandate that's come down uh with the happening in another community uh in Michigan. Which you can probably all guess which one that is. And uh, we've done uh an inventory of our system over the past couple of years and identified uh the number of lead services, both known lead and suspected lead. There's also And identified the number of lead services, both known lead and suspected lead. There's also. A case where if you have galvanized pipe. And it's downstream of a lead service or potentially at lead at one point in time. That galvanized is also a requirement for replacement. So we're. We're conservatively estimated ten thousand service lines that would fall under those three kind of categories that EPA has defined. We have an inventory that's due in April. We already have a consultant under contract as well as our own previous mapping efforts. And then we're staying abreast of a potential opportunity out of IEPA for disadvantaged community. Lead service line assistance is is the program title. It's not on the street just yet, but we anticipate January. With some assistance in our 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 lower income neighborhoods. Next slide. And then the question came up on lead in our in our water. We have been monitoring lead since the lead and copper rule of nineteen ninety two. And the action threshold is fifteen parts per billion. You can see the plotting there. We've never been more than half of that limit and we tend on the lower side. Next slide. Water main replacement, as mentioned, there's an age out in our system. Historically, we've averaged point five percent of our system replacement. If you flip that over and do the inverse, that's a two hundred year replacement clip. Which is about twice the expected life of our pipe. So we have to up upsize our program. And we've landed on one point four percent. So that takes us from an average of two miles of main replacement a year to six. To get out ahead of the age out and what we're seeing in failures in our system. Next slide. Well, this takes that Nessie curve approach on when our mains went in. When they're anticipated and we've gone in and plotted out a number of different. Replacement scenarios ranging from a baseline of one percent. To a perfect replacement rate of one point eight. And we've kind of threaded the needle at one point four. So our rate increase is budget around the one point four. Next slide. We're definitely going to take the opportunity to be respectful of other departments and their programs. So we'll leverage the software that we're already invested in. That's decision optimization technology, which. Works through GIS and will schedule our projects along with streets to make sure that we're not coming in. Behind a new overlay on a street and putting tearing it up two years later to put water main replacement in. So streets should follow water. Next slide. I'll pick up the pace. On the plant improvement side, the augmentation wells, that's already been mentioned. Filter upgrades is coming down the pike. We anticipate that with PFOS and some other regulations. Chemical feed upgrades and then electrical upgrades due to the age out of the plant. Some of that's original to the nineteen twenties construction. Next slide. And we intend to utilize federal funding, both low interest loans and WIFIA, which is a federal level. Our. Our programming is such that we anticipate twenty five percent cash pay as we go. And seventy five percent bonding ratio and how we've set the rate structure. Next slide. There was a key point on that slide I jumped over, but that's okay. We haven't raised our rates since twenty eleven last, so apologize on that. Here's a breakdown of how our current rate structure is on the residential side. We do in some of the older sections of town have a smaller diameter. Pipe size at a half inch service, which has a fixed fee. That's reduced down to a dollar twenty five and then our standard cubic foot. Charge of four oh one per hundred cubic feet. And then the standard residential, which we're calling the larger pipe. That has a a kind of standard meter charge at five dollars plus the same cubic foot charge. And just to give it a breakdown a little further. Out of thirty three thousand accounts, we have twenty three hundred accounts on that half inch side. And then for standard residential on the three quarter, we have twenty two thousand three hundred accounts. So you can see that there's a tenth of those accounts on the residential side in that smaller diameter. Next slide. And just a breakdown of where water rates stand with regards to median household income. The American Waterworks Association gives us a suggested range of one and a half, two and a half. Percent of MHI for. In affordability or reasonable ability of of our rates. Where we're at right now for rates that haven't changed in twelve years. We're at point six on the small, small meter and we're at point seven seven percent. On the standard meter size. Next slide. And then where do our rates currently stand? This survey was completed back in twenty one by Burns and Clancy out of Danville. And Bloomington fell on that lower third of the scale. You can see where where normal is more in the middle. And then if you chase it over to the green line on the right. That's Illinois American Champagne District. Next slide. And then our our proposed increases, and and we ended up, as already mentioned. By Deputy Director Jurgens. Is if we did this in in one rate increase. One year, one time, it would be a hundred and fifteen percent. What is proposed is three thirty three percents. We did look at dragging it out to five years. And based on capital outlay, we would be at thirty percent year one. Two years of twenty five percent and two years of twenty percent over a five year period. Currently, you can see. Where we land as far as the monthly fee. And then we strictly just go up thirty three percent each year till we hit. Year twenty, fiscal year twenty seven, and then would run out CPI from there. Next slide. As mentioned, we've not had a rate increase since twenty eleven. And you can see the compounding effect of CPI. Essentially what's proposed on this increase. Fifty two percent of the increase is from lack of an increase. Or pacing with CPI. The other forty eight percent of the proposed increase is capital itself. Next slide. Already kind of let the cat out of the bag on on the rate structure of three thirty threes. And then moving ahead CPI water sewer trash. I know we've heard some comments earlier this evening about. What water sewer trash CPI is four point two percent. We have calculated that over. The twelve year period that we have not had an increase. And for that period, it worked out to three point seven five percent. And that's the number that we've included in our rate structure moving ahead to ensure that we meet that service. But yeah, over the last one to two years, it's it's been four point two. But on a ten year average, it's been closer to three seventy five. Which still on a three percent, which water doesn't have, we're at zero. That's still going to accumulate about twenty. Twenty five percent shortfall. Next slide. Jeff, you should have kept me better on my timing. Larger pipe diameter, similar increase. What we included also was we grabbed. A water or well, actually the city bill from one of our staff members on the floor. And they use six hundred cubic feet instead of the average three hundred cubic feet per month. But what's interesting is even in that first year thirty three percent increase. The net effect on their bill because the other services are essentially left unchanged at three percent or. Three point seven five for CPI. It it works out to a a net increase of eleven percent. On the overall bill going from eighty six to ninety six. Next slide. We've discussed internally quite a bit on assistance on on. Lower income demographics. We already do have a program in place. This is on the solid waste side. The breakdown that's included there is we're finding that out of the solid waste accounts. Less than a quarter percent of the citizens utilize that. But we would look to extend that into water, automatically roll those. Accounts into that enrollment for water. But make sure that that's open for anyone that needs that access to to gain that access. And the proposal is, hopefully I'm not jumping a slide. That year one, we would forego the increase entirely. For anyone that would meet that qualification. So. At the end of the three year period, their their net increase would be sixty six percent. And we'd stave off that thirty three. Next slide. And then where do we land once we have those increases in place? For MHI on the census tract, I'm using the lowest census tract at twenty seven thousand in some change. And the increase as proposed at the end of year twenty seven. In comparison to the MHI from twenty one. So it's almost a five year old number at that point. We would end up if you had a small diameter meter at one point four percent of MHI. And then for the average, the three quarter inch, if you had that, it would be one point eight percent. So we're definitely within that recommended limit where MHI. As as water or as water as a percent of a MHI would land. Next slide. And then in addition to this. Jeff and City Manager, there's some language in the increase or the rate structure to support the increase. That there would be additional investigation. For other programs and opportunities for assistance. Next slide. Commercial came up as a question. Where does that land? Obviously, when you look at thirty three hundred cubic feet versus three hundred on a residential side. It's more like to a factor of ten more. But on the meter fee side. The inch and a half is ten dollars and fifty cents. And the two inch is sixteen dollars. So it's purely the volumetric, well, I shouldn't say purely. But it's largely the volumetric differential that you see these bills creep up to where they're at. And they increase at the same thirty three percent that we would propose to apply on the residential side. We do have what's called a declining block. Structure in place that we would leave in place. So the more you use, the less you pay. The first reduction is at. Thirty three hundred cubic feet. I said thirty, sorry, twenty three hundred cubic feet. So both of those. Customer sides on their average already have that built into the rate structure. It's not a huge discount, but it four oh one drops to, I believe, three eighty seven per hundred cubic feet. Also meter pricing. There's opportunities moving ahead to right size meters. A lot of commercial accounts just strictly. Have a three inch service line. They picked a three inch meter. The newer digital meters would offer the opportunity to step down. So there's potential savings there. Jeff, I'll let you jump in when we get into the potential for multi year contracts. I think that's proposed in the ordinance as well.
Yeah, thanks. Actually, we're going to bring back at a future meeting, probably right after the first of the year. A proposal for the council to consider that would allow. The city to enter into multi year agreements with some of our larger consumer. Users and industrial users. So we will bring that program back for future consideration after the first of the year.
And then item four is the potential for non potable water, larger irrigation, which mainly is. The city park. Parks and Recs, but any other potential developments, the soccer fields. That'd be a pursuit with Ben Ward on on using non potable for irrigation. Next slide. And then Jeff, I don't know if you want to elaborate on this, but currently there is a utility tax. That is assessed. What is proposed in in the ordinance? Is that that would be reduced down to keep it at exactly. Or a hair below the level it is today. So each thirty three percent. Increase over the three years, there's a cut or a slight reduction in that tax. So it just maintains itself that that's not increased at all. I missed something there? Nope, okay. Next slide, which I think is. A final slide. So. Sorry for running over. Take any questions if there are.
Thank you. Great presentation. Oh, sure. Okay.
Just real quick, and again, I want to say really appreciate the presentation, Director Andrews. One thing I I wanted to point out on the, you know, the there was a slide is our drinking water safe to drink and. And we showed the the points of lead that we do detect and it's it's not at reportable limits or or limits that we're concerned about. Part of the reason for that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we actually coat our pipes. So it helps address that lead issue, correct?
Yeah, that's that's a a benefit of some of the filtering techniques that we do at the plant. So there is some phosphate in the filtering process. And you'll see other communities that directly add phosphate in into the system to help coat. Coat the pipes. I can.
And I just wanted to to get that out there so that the public is aware. And even though we aren't seeing those types of levels in our system. Nonetheless, we're still under that mandate to replace those those lead service lines. I did not have anything else I wanted to share, but back to City Manager Gleason, if he had any other comments on this.
Thank you, Jeff and Ed. Now, this is more so for the community that's present this evening. But those that might be listening online or, you know, catching the recap through the medium after the fact. You know, just a reminder of how we got to tonight, that to be quite honest, is pretty exciting. The fact that this community has a kind of water resource as a municipal utility that we do. It's something that many communities would just die to have. So truly, we are blessed and these are major reservoirs that serve. This community and other smaller communities and other business entities outside of our community. So again, we're truly blessed. Leading up to the twenty nineteen Water Master Plan, which is really where this began several years ago. And it culminated in that twenty nineteen plan and we've been working this plan since that date. Tonight is that night where we're talking about the the rate portion, the next steps that we have. Ed was just hired as the Water Director. Deputy City Manager Jurgens just stepped into this position. There were a number of things that they they took and made sure that we were presenting this council. You know, in fact, the newly seated council, this was one of the first conversations that we had in in May. You know, this and other infrastructure improvements that were going to be coming in the next six or seven months. And very proud of the team and what they've presented. And something else, and I hope that, and again, I'm talking to the community. And hopefully you recognize the importance of staff. The emphasis that's placed on staff by this council. And being able to communicate accurately what's going on with our city finances, whether it's infrastructure projects. It's important. You can get up here and you can talk a lot and say nothing. And that is not what we do. And even though there might be some disagreement. May not be a unanimous vote this evening or on other votes. It's important to put my council on firm ground so that they can address the pushback. Or have that script to be able to speak to the community about what is actually occurring in our community. So I just wanted to take those couple of minutes. This is a big deal. And appreciate the presentation, Ed. You did great. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate it as well and. For you to give us something to consider. Water is definitely our most important resource. And as the city manager has said, it's something. Uh, and as the city manager has said, it's something that we are blessed to have uh, as a community. Uh, and I believe, Ed, you made a reference to another community uh, that has led us or the country to uh, um, you know, to uh, issue some of those uh, uh mandates. And so we certainly do not want to be in, in, in that situation. Um, I understand that the uh, it, it's certainly a, an increase in the rate is not something that anybody wants necessarily looks forward to. Uh, but I, I do think uh, just looking at the actual cost of four hundred million dollars, it's very difficult to achieve uh, without uh, an increase. And, and I, I think at, at some point, um, you know, regardless of how, how we, we do it, but we, we definitely have to as a community to, to work together to, to really protect one of our most precious uh, resource. Um, and, and make some uh, some advancements uh, for the future, because it's going to be very important in preserving this community and, and really us moving forward as a community. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to council members if they have. I see several lights, so we'll just go in. Maybe in order, Councilmember Crumpler?
I think, I think Councilmember Bowden was first.
Bowden? Okay, alright. Either first one I saw has that turn. Okay, so we'll go with Bowden. And Crumpler.
I just have a few questions. Um, how, how will the reduction in the utility tax have an effect on the pensions? Police and fire pensions?
Put that over to Jeff, since you've really taken the lion's share of, of dealing with that.
And I'm sure I have others in the room that'll correct me if I'm wrong. But the re- reduction is just for the water. And since we're going to be, we're not really going to be changing how much we're collecting. We just don't want to hit the consumers with the double whammy, where they're getting a rate increase and that automatically increases the tax. So they're, they're paying more on both line items.
Okay.
So theoretically, we should not be lowering how much we're collecting from that tax. We're just making sure we don't hit the residents with that double whammy.
Okay.
Does that help?
So it's not really affecting the money that we're setting aside from utility tax for pensions?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm gonna see if, I'm getting the thumbs up from Director Rathbun, so I think we're good.
Good. Um, and I'm just curious why going with the CPI versus staying with the three percent. I mean, it's close number, but is there a why?
I'll, I'll take my shot at that, and then I'll let Director Andrews take, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think what I've heard from staff is the CPI for water, sewer and trash more accurately is going to tell us where we need to be with our rates and increase it based on those costs. So it's, it's more specific to that. And so it will hopefully prevent us from being in another situation where, you know, ten years down the road, we are willfully off of where we need to be to meet our needs. And I will tell you, there will be, you know, upcoming needs for sewer and trash as well and, and the other infrastructure. So that, that's why we want to make sure we are being as accurate as we can be with those rate increases. But uh, but Director Andrews, I'll let you clean that up if you need to.
I think you, you, you pretty much have it. Uh, I will offer a previous rate study that I was involved in. Uh, we brought Raf Telus, who co-wrote the AWWA's Rate Setting Handbook. And I didn't really enjoy that process with them all that much, I will say, but the, the, the nugget that they brought, the, the gem, was the index for water, sewer, trash. There's, there's about a hundred indices that feed into the Consumer Price Index, that Blended Index, and you know, milk, bread, eggs, and your cost at the grocery store all feed into CPI. Uh, but for us on, I'll speak for water, sewer and trash, there's a separate index, and that's specifically because we find that bulk chemicals and those kind of operating processes are not the same. Uh, and so the last study I was involved with had a two and a half percent built into their index or CPI, the blended one for consumer. And a quarter of that community's rate increase was attributed by just grabbing on to the lower CPI number rather than indexing water, sewer, trash. And we went through that exercise, and we would have been you know, right on the, on the money. Uh, and that was from two thousand six to twenty nineteen, thirteen-year period.
Well, I know from the past that we've taken out mega loans and all that kind of stuff for water sewer, and I would like to avoid, you know, that going forward, where you had mentioned we're going to use some cash and some bonding. So I'm, I'm happy with that. I just was, that was curious. Um, and then uh, there was mention about growth. Now I have a concern about growth where we end up going more suburban expansion and adding more water mains and sewers and all that. So, I mean, this is just, this is not directed at you. This is me speaking. I would, when we talk about growth, I would like to see uh, infill or more density rather than, you know, annexing and adding, because then we're it's like counterproductive in my mind. You know, we're going to have to keep raising taxes to meet the needs of the um, expansion. So anybody that's listening.
And I would, if I could just comment to that real quick, I, I don't want to give the impression we're not building a system that can grow, you know, you know, the community exponentially and outward. This truly, when we talk about growth, we talk about we're going to be able to take somebody else on, you know, within the community or right on the edge. You know, we're not, and, and again, Director Andrews, correct me if I'm wrong. We're not trying to build a system that's just going to let us grow, you know, beyond our means.
Okay. And the replacement is six miles per year over ten years? That doesn't seem like a lot of miles.
No, that, I mean, that's, so that's a initiative that starts now and, and continues on. So uh, that would pace out or pace with our system age out.
Oh, I see.
One point four percent works out to uh, seventy years for the system replacement and that.
I guess I missed.
No, it's some of, some of the, the graphs were a little complex even for myself. Uh,
Thank you.
Tell staff, I have to present them to the general public at the end of the day too, so.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah. I want to thank Councilmember Bowden for her comment about um, the need for infill as opposed to sprawl. Um, I think part of that is why we're in this fix right now. Um, but I do have a question. I wonder, um, Director Andrews, if you could just remind me of something. I think that at one point I heard, not at this meeting, but in, at somewhere I heard that when there is a water main break, that is something that makes a community more vulnerable to lead issues that anytime there is a break, things can kind of break loose. Am I, and am I making that up or?
Uh, I won't say you made that up, but I'm.
I don't know where I heard that, but.
I'm not quite sure where you, you've heard that.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I will offer that lead service replacement uh, in the early incarnation, five to ten years ago, as that program was coming on, that they found that partial replacement, or maybe the municipality just replaced from the main to the corporate tap at the right-of-way line actually disrupted that downstream service side. So there could be some uh, that service line and that there could be uh, an increased lead exposure if particulates were released. So that could be inferred uh, from a break. But our standard monitoring, as we monitor lead uh, at all those uh, sample sites that were shared, does not pick that up in routine sampling. So I don't.
But it does sound like needing to do something comprehensively about the lead is
Well, yeah.
borne out by that.
Could be. It, it depends on the nature of the break. Um, our system.
No, I meant, I'm sorry.
The iron, the mains out the street. So a break on the main wouldn't necessarily have that impact on, on a service line. Uh, but you know, I don't.
Just to clarify, I was, I was responding to what you, you clarified.
Okay.
About the need to to not just do a partial replacement with lead.
Yeah, no, and, and that, and that's been borne out now that if, if uh, the upstream portion is, is lead or was lead at some point, a pass point in time. Uh, the downstream uh, service line, uh, with galvanized pipe, there's enough lead deposits that shed off of the lead service or the portion of the lead service up that they consider that galvanized requiring replacement. That basically becomes lead in the eyes of the agency. So when, when we've uh, and, and it's a good point, a lot of information to throw at everyone tonight, but uh, our cost programming for main replacement is budgeted to go ahead and take the service all the way into the house at the meter. So not trying to differentiate when we go down the main and say, well, we're going to take it to the corporate stop and stop there. The program is, we would go ahead and take it uh, to the house.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Director Andrews, for that detailed presentation this evening. I, I just have a, a couple of uh, comments and questions. Um, based on your, your talk this evening, would it be fair to say that this four hundred million um, project is mainly driven by our aging water system and changes in the um, federal and state mandates?
Yes.
Okay. And those were enacted in twenty-twenty-two. Is that correct?
The updates to.
Okay. Well, you know, one of the questions I'm hearing from my constituents in Ward Nine is, you know, wow, no water um, increase rate, no increase in the water rate since two thousand eleven seems good, but um, they're wondering would it, would it have been a better planning model to increase that rate more gradually? Then, then at the thirty-three percent now that's being proposed. Um, and could we have known um, um, maybe eight years ago or seven years ago that these, that these costs and repairs were imminent?
That's a fair, fair question. Uh, I think already uh, mentioned tonight, the master plan started in twenty nineteen. So I, I think chasing a date back too much before twenty nineteen might be a little, little unfair. Uh, but, you know, as that came into focus, I would say we're and again, I'm, I'm two months on the job.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm, I'm not.
But I, I, I would say in fairness, from the development I've seen of both the master plan study, when it was finalized, and that has rolled over into a rate study with CDM Smith as well. So this presentation was shared about a month ago uh, in advance with them. And I think a lot of it came down to kind of the, the chicken and the egg scenario. And, you know, what, what comes first or what drives each other? So rates drive how much capital you can undertake, but then your need for capital drives what the rates are. So at a point, we've, we've, we've kind of had this bit of a circular argument debate in-house at the Water Department. And now the presentation, provided that that's approved, we're locked into that. So capital is going to have to fit that funding as we progress out over the next uh, five to ten years.
Thank you. Um, I have another question, and maybe this is for Deputy City Manager Jurgens. Um, did I understand to say that less than twenty-five percent of our citizens who are eligible for assistance programs are for families, you had to help, you know, defer the cost of water bills that applied for that? Is that?
I, I, we actually, I don't think we have a water uh, assistance program in action yet.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so.
Go, go ahead, Ed.
So at some point in the past, and I can't give you the exact date, I'm sure somebody in my department could, but I, um, the half-inch meters were adopted because they're predominantly in the older areas of town, and some of the income profiles fit that. That doesn't mean everyone that has a half-inch meter needs, needs assistance.
Right, sure.
Um, that's what was locked into. So the reference to the income assistance is currently a program in the solid waste side. And so out of solid waste, only point two percent of the accounts, I think thirty-seven accounts out of twenty-one thousand. There's, there's less trash accounts than there are water accounts. Actually apply for that. Uh, we've run our numbers in that scenario and can absorb up to one to two percent of our water accounts jumping onto that and still be able to, I mean, we'll have to play with the capital funding drop a little bit, but you know, a month or two slide uh, to accommodate that. So we would, even if that's a uh, significant increase in the uptake on that needs assistance as we open that up, we would be able to absorb that and what's proposed.
And, and um, what, I wonder what new practices the city might undertake to publicize that a little bit better? It just seems like the information's not, has not gotten out there very well for families who might need that.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. That's something that we've been working on, and that's something that's included in the ordinance is uh, kind of a directive to the city manager to make sure that not only that program, but any other programs that we're able to research and find and explore are well-advertised and are on the city's website, and that we can point them to that direction. Um, because we do want to make sure those that need help in our community get that help and, and can help plan for and absorb this increase.
Thank you both.
Councilmember Baker?
More just a comment. Thank you, Ed, as always, for the, the good information. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is my assessment of what you said. If we chose to not do this right now, there's a guarantee that pretty much everything would end up being mandated. And it would be either significant, it would be significantly more expensive by waiting for a mandate or a failure in the system than what you're proposing.
That's a fair statement. Oh.
So what I'm taking from that is, we have no choice but to do this work. This work is necessary for safe drinking water and, and management of the system. We have to do the work. Now, the, the issue that we're struggling with as a group is how to pay for the, the work that has to be done. And I think that's where we separate from this is, we proposed a smaller tax increase to offset some of this last week, not as much as I personally wanted, but um, I think we need to pass this. But we also, as a council, need to be responsible to the people of the, the community to find a way to reduce the burden on them and find ways to offset this cost in any way possible, so that we aren't the keep putting the straw on that breaks the camel's back, basically. So I think we need to do this. Um, but I want to find alternative ways to reduce, to offset this.
Councilmember Motney, any questions?
Yes. I do have a few questions um, for uh, for the director, uh, starting there. Um, first of all, I'd like to uh, talk about lost or unaccounted-for water. Um, I understand from our prior conversation, you previously worked in the city of Washington, um, Illinois. And that um, in alignment with the AWWA's requests for pursuing leakage, uh, unaccounted-for water, because it is also a source of unaccounted-for revenue. Could you refresh my memory on the actions that you took and the progress that you made in very short order to reduce that gap?
Yeah, I, what you're uh, referring to is a system-wide meter replacement program. Uh, that community had a thirty-three percent water loss as well. When we started that, it grew to about thirty-five percent unaccounted for. Uh, the replacement of meters in that community, because they were older mechanical meters at uh, a near age out of twenty years. Uh, we were able to reduce that unaccounted for down to twenty point five or twenty and a half percent. Uh, the CDM Smith Master Plan, they did an assessment of where our meter age out is. We do have an active replacement program. Uh, so we do right now a million dollars worth of meter replacements uh, in-house. And so. uh, in-house. And so our, uh, unaccounted for attributed to meters under reeds is six percent. Uh, based on our conversation, I did include a slide on that this evening. Uh, the largest, over half of the system loss is from the distribution side. So that would be main age outs and then in, in some of those older service lines as well. So we would be gaining the benefit uh, on our annualized main replacement of getting out ahead and trying to reclaim, uh, that, that apparent loss. I don't want to say unfortunately, uh, meters are an instantaneous, uh, payback because that's metered water that you bill for. Distribution, right now, that's water that we pump, but is lost underground by and large. So tightening up our system means we pump less water, which has a benefit, but it's not a ring up at the pump, so to speak, that we gain it, uh, in enhanced, uh, revenue increase. You know, through, through that at, at a retail level.
So you're saying now.
Yeah, Councilmember, sorry, before you go any further, I think we're out of time. So if I could get a motion to extend.
I'll move to extend the discussion time.
How much time?
Uh, ten minutes, five, five minutes.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Becker. Okay, and quick voice vote.
Councilmember Kearns?
Aye.
Councilmember Bullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, sorry, Councilmember Motney, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So, um, Director Andrews, then are you saying that we are now monitoring these, um, key performance indicators, um, as something intentionally being done so that we can close the gap on that? Because in your other community, it looks like it was a fifteen percent, um, addition to the revenue that we should have been collected, should have been collecting in that community and weren't. Um, and even if the number here is six percent, that would still mean, um, an improvement in our financial situation here with the current water delivery.
Yes, but not to the degree that I think you quick calculated there. Uh, so the revenue enhancement in, in Washington worked out to roughly two hundred and sixty-five grand a year, uh, which we ended up to fund that project. We took out a ten-year loan, uh, two point two million dollars. So basically we met debt service. So the meters themselves, the digital meters have a twenty-year lifespan. They're warranted out uh, to twenty years, not a full warranty. They're warranted at a hundred percent out to ten years and then they decline that warranty down to zero by year twenty. Uh, it's a sealed battery unit. So at the end of life, you have to chuck it and put a new one in.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but in light of the fact that I've only been allowed here for five minutes total to discuss, I'd like to move on to a different question, if that's okay.
No, that's fine. I, 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 and for us, we have run a number that, uh, we should gain maybe nine hundred thousand and some change. Uh, we won't take our unaccounted for to zero on the meters because meters themselves have a one and a half uh, percent inherent accuracy. Uh, but beyond that, uh, we, we would stand to gain some benefit, yes. And, and we factored that in.
Well, uh, a nine hundred thousand dollar shift in revenue seems significant to me. So thank you for following up there. Um, I'd like to talk next about the CPI WST discussion. Um, this is something that I was surprised to see, um, as we're effectively building in an automatic increase for the trash and sewer side of this, um, as we're making this decision here on water. Um, looking at the data, it looks like the eighteen-year average on the CPA CPI WST is around four point two percent. Um, which is, you know, a significant increase for year-over-year increases from the three percent um, inflation that we already have built into those other two, um, utilities. So, um, Assistant City Manager Jurgens, could you comment on that?
Sure. Again, this is, uh, primarily just to make sure that we put those funds in a position to be prepared for the expenses that those are going to incur. And so that, the, the CPI for water, sewer and trash is just a, a, uh, what, uh, the industry considers a better index for keeping up with those expenses. As you said, we currently have a three percent increase in there. Sometimes, you know, it's, it looks like the last three years, you know, it's, it's been over three percent, um, always under five percent. Um, but that's, that's just a staff recommendation that that'll be better to help us plan and fund those projects in the future without borrowing. But again, that's, that's up to the council's, uh, discretion.
Well, it's certainly better for the city from a revenue perspective, but, um, you know, just looking at comments that have been posted on social media in the last twenty-four to forty-eight, the public, I mean, there are folks that are talking about, you know, I can barely pay my, that is disincenting, uh, heads down focus on cost containment for, for, um, for city staff as we move forward in this area and we're shifting that burden, building in, um, an insurance policy, if you will, but um, on the backs of our taxpayers. Um, my next question relates to, um, the commercial side of the house. The more you use, the less you pay. Um, reading about water management in other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions are encouraging conservation. I'm wondering why we would be incenting higher use for a price decrease at volume for, for, um, for this.
Yeah, you can go ahead and answer. I know we're out of time, so I'll let you answer and then we'll.
Yeah, that, that's not a proposed, uh, change, uh, to our rate structure. That's, that's as it's set up currently. And I think you'll see on our average residential, uh, where you, you know, you might see an increase to discourage uh, high consumption on the residential side. Uh, as you have larger commercial customers, they typically would see a break, uh, in their higher volume usages. And I think the ordinance, uh, as presented, uh, Director Jurgens, this evening gives administration some latitude in being able to negotiate with larger commercial on industrial type accounts, uh, moving ahead to help incentivize them. Uh, and where that comes from is a large industrial client usually has a steady baseline and we can build that into the equation and be able to provide that water at a cheaper service for that larger volume uh, than a, a smaller residential account or smaller commercial account.
I, again, um, I have a couple of other points, I think, on an issue this important to have our opportunity for discussion truncated. It's concerning to me. I just want to make two other, uh, points about this.
Well, if you want to, to talk a little bit more, I mean, I, if anybody wants to make a motion for another five, that, that's fine. But at, at some point, we'll, we'll have to.
I'll just make a closing comment then. Um, I, I think, you know, the word I'm thinking about here is context. Um, there have been several hundred million dollars worth of identified deferred water maintenance since well before I joined this council because I studied those documents as I was preparing for this role. Um, so where were these conversations as we were teeing up tax increases for other projects that were of a discretionary nature? Um, you know, here we are and we have placed such an incredible burden on our taxpayers in these last, um, few months. The volume of calls I'm getting is increasing significantly. Um, two additional comments. I'm glad, uh, Councilmember Becker brought up the importance of water. Yes, it is critical. But from last week, that while we had an earmarked, um, uh, tax increase a year ago that was dedicated to public safety pensions, in this past year, we actually um, contributed less to those pensions than we had the year before. So having all of these things, you know, separated, it really puts us at a disadvantage because we really can't, as council members, get a complete picture of the financial condition of all of these large projects across, um, the city. I do think there is an opportunity to improve how we're planning accordingly.
Okay.
I move to approve the item as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Danenberger. And then the motion by, it was by Councilmember Crumpler. Okay, I think we have a couple of problems on the.
My screen is locked, so I'll voice vote maybe.
Well, those that are not locked then can vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to go ahead and everyone vote if it's on your screen and then I can call you if it doesn't. And Councilmember Motney, how would you like to vote?
I'll vote no.
Okay, so the item passes. There are two nays to announce?
Councilmember Motney and Councilmember Lee.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to move on to the Finance Director's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, last meeting of, uh, the month. So we have, uh, Scott will walk through the, uh, monthly Finance Director's report. We trend well. Uh, and, and we communicate that. Uh, I think we also, um, do a good job of, uh, sharing, uh, what some of the revenues are, are needed for. Uh, some of the infrastructure projects, uh, it's by design. Uh, the conversation about hydraulic modeling last week, property tax reduction uh, that this council, uh, approved, uh, while still capturing some of the valuation. The property tax rate has remained the same for several years. Uh, very tough discussion, uh, and, uh, vote just a couple of minutes ago on the water rate. Uh, it's one where you could say the community, uh, you know, staved off, uh, increases for the last twelve, thirteen years and, and the day came. Uh, not going to suggest that that's a bad model, not ju, not one that I would recommend. Uh, but it's really in staff being able to communicate, uh, an accurate story to, uh, the community. And what Scott's about to do is very important, uh, to that. So Scott, you are queued up and you are next.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Gleason, Mayor Council. Uh, October thirty-first financial summary, we are uh, technically six months into the, uh, fiscal year, uh, but as, as I mentioned, every month we have delays in revenues. So sales tax revenues, uh, we're four months in. Um, those are on, uh, substantial delay from the recognition that we get from the state. Um, the tone is the same as last month. Uh, revenues are still trending well. Um, expenses, uh, we're monitoring. Uh, there, there is going to be a tail on some of our expenditures, some of our equipment is hard to get, that kind of thing. Uh, but for right now, we are, we are trending well from revenue standpoint. And as I mentioned, um, several times, we can't control expenses, but we can try to manage them with timing and, uh, being kind of quick on our feet related to some of those equipment purchases, et cetera. So next slide, please. Uh, so the October, uh, major tax revenue, um, we have a, a couple of, um, material bumps over the prior month. Uh, some of them in my, uh, uh, regard, uh, have question marks related to them, specifically, uh, the state sales tax. Um, we have a million fifty-eight year-to-date, uh, variance. You can see the prior year-to-date over, and to the right, we're six hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars ahead. Um, the, the most recent month, we were nearly six hundred thousand dollars, a positive variance, um, over the budget that we anticipated, uh, at the beginning of the year. Uh, my concern, um, is that the, the sales tax holiday that was in effect for, for one year came to an end right when this month hit. The state of Illinois was kind of covering that position, uh, as retailers, grocery stores did not collect that tax uh, and paying the municipalities for those state sales taxes. Um, and then in July, they started collecting those again. So I have a concern about this. Uh, but right now, that, that number, uh, for state sales tax, a million dollars positive year-to-date, um, is, is quite substantial. A local motor fuel tax, I'll comment that, on that as well. We're still trending, um, a positive variance a year-to-date, a hundred fifty-four thousand, a hundred and eight, a hundred nine thousand dollars over prior year. So, you know, this is not an inflation-based, uh, tax for us. Um, this is a consumption, straight consumption on the number of gallons being used. So, uh, our residents or visitors, people coming into the city, um, are utilizing more tax or more gas within our community. And then replacement tax, uh, nine hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, over year-to-date. Now, you can see for prior year, it's down four hundred sixty-three thousand, uh, but this had a substantial jump for the prior month because I wanted to highlight replacement tax is kind of odd. We get eight payments from the state per year versus the twelve months. So the timing can, can kind of swing things around from a month-to-month, uh, standpoint. So, uh, down at the bottom, you know, we are four point six million dollars, a positive year-to-date variance on our tax revenues. A lot of inflation, inflation causing this, but we will be, to give a little snapshot into the FY twenty-five budget, we, we'll be taking our, our tax revenue budgets up. We kind of were conservative going into FY twenty-four. Um, but as I've mentioned in, in previous, uh, presentations, even the levy, you know, we have planned on additional, um, expenditures related to subsidizing asphalt and concrete by three million, additional staff for public safety, et cetera. So the utilization of those tax revenue dollars, uh, for the advancement of initiatives in the community will be more evident during the budgetary process. Next slide, please. General Fund, um, reminder to the community, uh, the General Fund is our largest fund. Uh, we review it in, uh, by itself. It is tax, uh, funded primarily. You can see that, um, uh, the revised budget of a hundred and forty-two point nine million dollars in revenue, almost a hundred million of that is related to taxes. So this is kind of like an economically uh, driven fund, our public safety, parks, admin, et cetera, are paid from this fund. That's why it gets a, a, a lot of scrutiny by the rating agencies and we talk about it a lot. At this point in time, our projected year-end um, ties to our revised budget, except for, uh, the use of reserves. Again, just kind of the lesson in how we budget, we budget for a balanced budget. So we show use of reserves as a revenue source, even though it's a use of savings, so it's not a current year revenue source. So when you're just looking at our current year, uh, the total revenue will be less that, uh, use of reserves of the seventeen point three million. And just a reminder, Council and to the community, the makeup of that, we, we budgeted going into this year, three point four million dollars of subsidies for the arena of the Lincoln Garage and the Golf Fund. These are funds that need additional support from the General Fund related to capital projects. They just, they don't have the revenue streams to support those capital projects. And then we did not budget the, um, ECD ARPA grants in FY twenty, or for FY twenty-four, we weren't sure of those programs. So we did a use of reserves for that. And then the remaining ten million, approximately ten million, was subsidizing water and sewer and storm water for the advancement of the Locust Colton Project. So about a ten million dollar use of reserves from the General Fund to subsidize those other funds. Next slide, please. A general fund expenditures, um, these are tracking fairly well at this point in time. Um, I'll highlight the revised budget column versus projected year-end. You can see those match exactly. One forty-two point, or basically a hundred and forty-three million. So with the revenues, we took out the, the reserves for the expenditures, uh, they tie at this point in time. We're just not far enough in a year to start revising those totals. Um, you can see in the far, or not the far right, the projected year-end, though, um, we're looking at still about that forty million dollar projected a year-end, uh, total reserve balance for the, for the General Fund. Next slide, please. Our enterprise funds, okay, down, second, or first line from the bottom, revenue trend. Um, you know, we're fifty percent through the year, so you can see where our revenues are tracking. And we've been highlighting the last couple of months how well our golf fund is doing, you know, through this point of the year. Now, golf is shut down pretty much for the winter, but it's ninety-seven percent of the revenues have been realized, uh, for the year with some season, uh, still to come this spring. Um, two point five million dollars last year at this time, the golf fund had two point one million. Next slide, please. Uh, this month, we are, um, highlighting the solid waste of funds. So this, this is a pretty simplistic, uh, revenue structure for the solid waste fund. Uh, in years past, uh, we've had revenues related to recycling fees that would have been buried in the charges for services. Um, that is one of the, um, the line items for this fund that varies pretty materially from year to year. A few years ago, we were making money off our, our recycling. Um, in the last couple of years, we've been paying money. So that activity is actually in our expenditure side of the fund. So the charges for services, um, those are, those are mostly our cart fees. So the charges for services, um, those are, those are mostly our cart fees. So you can see we're we're right on schedule fifty percent uh through the year. So, you know, that's a pretty dependable revenue source. I mean, uh, for that fund, uh, comes in as budgeted, fines, forfeiture, forfeitures, investment income. You know, we're doing very well uh with interest rates this year. I've mentioned before, you know, we're we're plus five percent and and a lot of our Illinois funds are our sweep accounts with our bank. Um, whereas a couple of years ago, we were at point, we were less than one percent interest on on our cash. Next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned last week, for enterprise funds, we budget capital projects within the funds. It's different for the General Fund. Capital projects are budgeted within a capital improvement fund, and we show the expenditure on the General Fund as a transfer out. It gets complicated. The money goes into a capital improvement fund and we pay for the projects in that fund. So that's one of the items where we kind of gross up our budget. But for enterprise funds, uh, we budget the projects within the fund. Solid Waste typically has no capital projects. But you can see in the capital expenditures line, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars just tagged there for potential relocation of the Citizens Convenience Center. That's not going to happen this year, but I wanted to highlight some of the budgetary exercises um that occur within the fund. So um you can see that the expenses are tracking actually a little less than the fifty percent. Um, this fund operates at a slight surplus over and above what you see um with the in the principal expense and interest expense. So those are equipment leases uh that we have. So basically with about six hundred sixty seven thousand dollars of debt service, the fund is operating breakeven. So there's a lot of high capital equipment needs for this fund. And in the past, we've been um, we've been utilizing a lease for this fund because it just doesn't have the excess cash uh to operate or to purchase those capital equipment. Now, you can see that we do have two point six million dollars in audited beginning fund balance, so it's a pretty healthy fund balance. But in our future years, we're showing the use of that reserves to purchase those large capital equipment needs uh for this fund. Hopefully, we can br- bring down that dependence on borrowing, but it's a balancing act for this fund. There's there's, you know, that seven hundred thousand dollars in available cash for equipment. You know, these these trucks are very expensive. Um, so we manage that from a a future uh future year's standpoint and making sure the reserves um don't don't get depleted too substantially uh going out over those five years. Next slide, please. And this month, we have an extra slide. So uh finance news, maybe we'll make this recurring thing and I'll come up with a news headline every month. Um, great news, our credit rating with Moody's. Uh, that's, so there's three ratings agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch. Moody's and S and P are basically the 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 two largest of the rating agencies. Um, we utilize Moody's to do um to review our credit when we uh went out for the library in the pool bond. Um, a couple of years ago, we had a slight upgrade at that time from an AA two uh stable to AA two positive. It's kind of interesting that Moody's, their their grades like an AA three is is not as good as an AA one. So you think it'd go the other way around. Um, but they contacted uh the Finance Department here a few weeks ago saying, you know, that we they wanted to rev- review us again because uh the message really that they received a couple of years ago was so positive. We had a lot of things going uh well. So over a couple of calls, uh providing them, you know, a lot of the recent uh growth. Um, uh, the councils approved and and certain things like with Ferrero, the development on the west side, uh Riv- Rivian's growth. Um, we were upgraded to um the highest double A rating uh that Moody's provides, so one step below a double A. So what does that mean? Um, it means essentially lower borrowing costs. I mean, the the investors look at those ratings uh to determine when the pricing of an issuance kind of is created. That's that's part of the formula. You know, what are the Moody's uh the ratings agencies looking at? Now, Moody's is considered a somewhat conservative rating agency. Um, so, you know, getting this upgrade with them is even better. I checked in with our financial advisor. One of the reasons we we requested Moody's review us last, the last time instead of one of the other two is because of the reputation and also because we were already pretty high within their category. And so, you know, it was kind of a target, you know, getting movement within them. Let's focus on them and and it has worked, you know, so that's really positive uh news. It um it communicates to the the community uh the the growth that's occurring here locally, the stability of our finances um and everything that's being done. Next slide, please. And as usual, um, this information can be located on the city's website at those addresses. And next slide, please. Next slide, please. And we're done. I gotta put questions on there and questions.
Okay, City Manager Gleason?
Just real quick and and thank you. But to to the rating, um, you know, we we do have a great story to tell. I know that this was released uh last week, uh, but it's it's not just the things that we see, you know, the the growth and revenue uh which inflation is driving some of that, Rivian, Ferrero, some of the others. It's 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 council action over the past couple of years, you know, on taking on uh some of the uh challenging, difficult decisions. That's something when we tell our story is very much uh a part of uh why we saw this uh rating increase last time. Uh, the notch up and then definitely uh this time. Thanks, Mayor.
Sure. And Scott, when was the last rating before this one uh increase or? Did you say that?
Uh, it was um two years ago, it would have been March of twenty one was when we got the slight tick up. We had a we a ratings review request, specifically made a request of Moody's related to the bond issuance for the library in the pool.
Okay. And and then the um in terms of the the interest rates, so better interest rates, what do you approximate that to be?
I I should have looked that up. I I think I had that the last time we had the discussion, but I I wouldn't venture to try to make it up at this point in time. Um, but when you're, when you're dealing with, I mean, if you're talking twenty, thirty, forty million dollars over twenty, thirty years, you know, even just a slight interest rate um reduction turns into real dollars very quickly.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember Bowlin?
Thank you. Um, you always do a good job. Um, you focused on solid waste. And you said that it's uh bal- balanced or there's no deficit like it used to be? Because it seemed to be subsidized quite a bit in the past. What's changed?
Well, it it depends on the context with which you look at the fund. So um, you know, currently, you know, we have six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars worth of debt or worth of a monthly annual, excuse me, get this out, uh debt service. So we did do the the major shift a couple of years ago, a few years ago, related to the price increase. That that plugged a a huge hole in the fund. The expenditures, I think, have stabilized, but I think, you know, what you're referring to is really a couple of years ago. But also, if you take it in context of the equipment needs, uh, which is something the city manager, I and the that's when you can kind of say it's operating at a deficit. So I I should have been careful about, you know, six hundred sixty seven thousand dollars worth of lease debt service is afforded by the current revenue structure. But if we needed, you know, a million, two million dollars worth of annual equipment needs, which does occur with this fund, that's when it operates at a deficit. So depending on the snapshot in time.
Okay, okay. I just was surprised. It's like they pulled off a miracle. Um, and the other thing, there's so much focus on reserves and um the first thing is, is does these current reserves include holdover projects from previous years? Like Fox Creek Road and Hamilton Road and any other holdover project?
So a- again, that's one of those context things. So we've got a a reserve balance per fund. So most of the focus is what we reference is the reserves of the General Fund. And that would not include any of the motor fuel tax, state motor fuel tax fund uh projects, et cetera. Now, the state motor fuel tax, it has its own reserves. I I can't recall what they are right now, but they're substantial because we keep kicking that project out, but it is not included as part of the General Fund Reserve number.
Is it fair to say that going forward with the major needs that we have um that the reserve is going to be strategically reduced to address those needs in the next couple of years?
Sure, I'll, uh, yes, I mean.
I mean, you don't have to tell me what they are.
All I can tell you is like, you know, the the, what I'm hearing is that there's a need for fire stations, public works facility, potentially downtown uh streetscape redevelopment, um, Marcus Street Garage. All of these items would be funded by General Fund Reserves and a combination of debt. You know, we could pay for individually one of those or or a couple of them from reserves. Now, uh, it sounds like a large number, but we're, you know, GFOA, standard practice, you know, for a triple A uh rated, we're actually low in the reserves, believe it or not. Um, but for trip, for a standard, you know, rainy day fund, you should have at least two months worth of expenditures. And so for us, depending on, you know, our bu- budget's growing, so that's roughly sixteen to seventeen percent. Um, so on a hundred and thirty million dollar uh budget, you know, if you rounded up to twenty percent, that'd be twenty, you know, twenty-six million. So it's somewhere around twenty to twenty-five million of that, what we're projecting, the forty million dollars in a twenty-four. We need to keep, you know, and and keep in case there's another COVID or there's a tornado, God forbid, or something where or a cyber attack on the state, you know, kind of situation, you know, cybersecurity, cyber concerns have become.
Well, I mean, I understand about the basic.
Yeah.
When I keep three months in reserves for a moment, it's just me, but um I'm talking about over and above. Those are going to be strategically spent on things that we need, like fire station.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Yeah. And Councilmember Montney, any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the information, Scott.
Okay, thank you. And we all are having lunch courtesy of uh Councilmember Bowlin tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No, we're not ready yet. Um, so um, we are, okay, thank you, Scott. And then we're moving on to the city managers discussion.
We're getting close, promise. It's been a good night. Uh, real quick, we're gonna do something a little bit different on the events slides that we've done in the past. Uh, Catherine Murphy has actually uh created uh a video. We're gonna present them that way. And uh the uh the subtle festive uh background holiday music was created by both deputy city managers. So here we go. And and the other reason for this video is it's something that we can post to the website. Uh, when I would recite them, that was not something that uh we were able to post. So hit it, Catherine.
Get ready to unwrap the magic of the holiday season with a sleigh full of festive events brought to you by the city of Bloomington. Kicking off the celebration, join us for the Parks and Rec Soar Holiday Performers and their holiday favorites show on November thirtieth. It's a free event where the doors swing open at six thirty PM and the show takes flight at seven. A night filled with joy and wonder awaits. Illuminate your evenings at Miller Park Zoo with wild lights on December first, second, eighth, and ninth from five to eight PM. Immerse yourself in the enchanting glow of the holiday season. Tickets are going fast. Call three zero nine four three four twenty-two fifty to secure your spot. Grab your jingle bells and running shoes for the ugliest sweater run on Saturday, December ninth at one PM in Miller Park. Register now at BloomingtonParks.org for a dash of holiday fun and fitness. Journey downtown on December first for Once Upon a Holiday. The festivities begin at four forty-five PM with the holiday tree lighting and continue into the evening with First Friday featuring live window vignettes. Downtown Bloomington will be transformed into a winter wonderland. Don't miss stocking stuffer Saturday on December sixteenth, a day filled with shopping delights for everyone on your list. And for those last-minute holiday treats, join us at the Holiday Farmers Market at Grossinger Motors Arena on December twenty-third from nine AM to noon. Fresh, local, and festive, it's the perfect way to wrap up your holiday preparations. From spectacular performances to twinkling lights and festive runs, the city of Bloomington invites you to make lasting memories this holiday season. Join us in celebrating the most wonderful time of the year.
That is fantastic. You must have worked in radio before.
I was gonna say, I I think I heard that voice on the radio. So, uh, next slide, please, Phil. Great job, Catherine. We have uh new employees, I believe. Here we go, October new hires. Uh, we have John in marketing, uh Ruth in public safety, and Christie, uh, Community Enhancement Inspector. Paul is a systems administrator, uh, started with IT. Next slide. And additional new hires, uh Noel, uh, Public Safety Dispatcher, Dispatcher. Uh, Stacy is Support Staff and Finance. Then uh Mike started as uh uh Anthony Nelson's Assistant on the Arts and Entertainment uh position. And next slide, here we go, uh, Chief Eric West. Uh, his retirement will be effective uh this Thursday. Uh, the chief uh is not here. He is uh Monday Night Football. Uh, the department, friends and family, um, I got him uh and some uh family tickets. So he's up watching the Bears, I think, currently beating the Vikings. And uh so he he's just had quite the accomplished career. Uh, three years ago, uh, he stepped into the position uh as a fire chief. He's held the position a little bit more than two years and has just done a a very good job. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes to uh recognize him. The announcement of the new fire chief will be uh made tomorrow, but tonight is Chief Eric West's uh evening. So congratulations to him. Next slide. I think that's it. And then real quick, uh, Public Works is could be uh completed or is completing the second round of uh uh leaf pickup. Uh, the snow that we had yesterday did not impact according to uh Public Works Director Mose Ricky. And then also a reminder that we do have a council meeting next Monday. Uh, it's our December schedule. So we have a council meeting uh the fourth and the eleventh, no committee of the whole, and then we're done for the rest of the year. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And again, congratulations to Chief Eric West and uh on a well-deserved career. And next uh Friday, I think we're doing the uh tree lighting ceremony right on uh at the square, so which will be uh exciting. I I missed it uh last year because of another commitment and Councilmember Bowlin was kind enough to uh um, you know, step in for me, but that's something that I always look forward to uh every year. So, council members, any comments, question, Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I thought the video was going to include the deputy city managers with Christmas hats. Um, and I I'd like to comment to uh what Scott was, Scott Steinling was talking about with the, you know, the leaves not picking up. Um, we have what, eight hundred miles of roads or lane miles, which would make four hundred miles of streets? I think that um Public Works did a pretty good job picking up leaves in what, three, four weeks on that many miles of roads. So thanks to Public Works.
Others? Okay, I don't see anybody. Councilmember Montney?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Bowlin and second by Councilmember Hendricks. Others in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, okay, we all adjourn.